During meeting, I turn it over to Mr. Borner.
Actually, I'm gonna bounce right back to you. Purpose of this work session is to talk about the price-cost adjustment, the mechanisms and policies behind it. Basically, this was scheduled at... Requested one councilmember, we figured it's probably of interest to all of you and also the public, so we are streaming this. We got John joining us remotely. And I've just... We haven't really prepared any presentation or anything, but I'm gonna ask Mayor if you or any other councilmembers have any specific questions you wanna use to kinda dive into the subject.
Gentlemen, can I ask you to do me a favor? Can you please speak into your microphones? Because I can't hear very well. If you speak into the microphone, I can hear a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
I can... Just, you know, the better you... The phone, the better.
Do I... Oh, they pull them down lower and they pick you up a little bit better.
Okay.
Like, sometimes too much.
How's that?
If they're a little bit lower. If they're too high, they don't pick up.
All right, John, we'll do our best. So what... You're welcome. So what... Do we have any questions? Any comments about the...
Do you want me to...
Yeah. John, what do we need to know about this, John?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and get going?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. The PCA, the power cost adjustment. It starts with number in the ANP bill. Adjusted once a year, November 1st and May 1st. Remember, it's the power cost adjustment. Every company essentially all costs. So we start with A and C. And then we add to the first two.
Hey, John, you're kinda breaking up. You're breaking up yourself now.
All right. You know, I would go along fine. But I hope it continues to work out fine. Just continue moving. We're down. I see what you're saying. Yeah, but I think... So if we just... Then we say... Power, cancel. Recover our power costs. And, um, which... Yeah. Do... Yes? So, here, closing.
No, we're losing you. It's like stereo, one speaker's going out at a time. I think Woody's working on it.
Let me make a change, let's see.
Thought I was back on the Death Star.
I thought it back in my teenage years. This figure's going out, this one's working good, this is...
All right, John, try talking now, let me see if that's a little bit better.
Okay. Thank you, you're there again. Yeah, you can put the microphone back on. She had a big...
That's probably what it is, yes. It's like trying to noise cancel on that. And I've stopped it on this end, but... I'm trying to... See if you can get it on.
Yeah.
You need to.
Yeah, y'all wanna order pizza?
Probably.
All right, John, let's try it one more time. That's about like a double one again. Oh, that's worse. Yeah.
Yeah, you okay over there? Just making conversation. Okay, Stacy? Woody? Jim?
All right, let's try it again. You...
It's coming over here.
You see the little microphone icon at the bottom right there? Next to the camera icon, all right? Hit the little button beside the microphones to the left, and it says Audio Settings. And then, what does it say on the left right there for you?
It's on... It's on our audio system default.
All right, hit... Click on that and let me know what other options does it say. It may not give you any other option, by the way.
We go for option.
Okay. That's it, yeah. All right, but it's about as good as it's gonna give, I think, there. The only other thing that you could do... Let me walk you through this real quick, and try. All right, so, John, on the bottom of the screen, you see the microphone icon, camera, computer, smile face, CC, hand, and then three dots. All right? All right, click on the three dots. Then click on Set. All right, now, when it says on Audio, it's Studio Sound. Click that all. Is there a lot of... And let's... And let's see if that works. Maybe a little bit better. You can just get as close as you can, but that's... That's all I can do for you.
Well, that's all you can do, that's all we can do.
That's all we can do.
All right, John, let's go ahead and try again.
Okay. Power cost adjustment. It's adjusted twice a year. It's up or down every May 1st. It's attempting to collect power costs. That starts with the ANP bill. And it has some additions and credits. Additions over the open market forms purchase agreement which is the final plan of change mirror. And we also recovered the cost of the solar project here. Recovered the operating cost of the snow intake. And the cost associated with the degenerative, the capital cost and operating cost. For example, we received a debt credit for the solar plant of about $20,000 a month. So we're actually hoping to get one PJM to operate that plant, which is about $20,000 a month for the operating cost. And we took down the energy in January, which is another $50,000. That plant is recovering significantly energy costs and, uh, pressure and cost. We used a six-month, not six-month, a six-month fixed average call to determine the level of the DCA. And with the new bridge culture that was approved by Calzor, all that of power cost is now separated from base rates. Previously, we accidentally got a lot of cross rule into base rates. In the interest of transparency, we have those cost out of the base rate. So, uh, that's the right scales of the money. In addition to the actual average cost for the previous six months, that we have taken from, uh... If we want to... Uh, and all the four, three, four, we have the previous six months. So, if the DCA is recovered now, DCA because we just like recover our power costs for the six months period, we add that into the recovery. If you recover more power costs, you would reduce those costs.
Yeah, we're probably gonna need this writing.
Yeah.
Sorry? Um, if you look at our... That's the... This is about $78,000 to change. Here, for the... Look, I'm... We're on deep box on January, February. And, uh... To all... To all... And I love what you did, uh, six... Personal costs are more or less the same as the issue and generation capacity. Should, in the future, or at least after, should reduce our... Is, you... To all the work in on your generation. And then, this call previously, I'm going to take over and answer it online. We just got a question, reduce our costs. Thank you, this is called, or some country here. Someone else who can hear, uh... Sounds like there's a movement there, something I don't know.
Jamie got closed captioning. Jamie got closed captioning, my bad.
If we just went to audio instead of video...
Yeah. This...
Make it better? I'm not gonna get anything...
Do we need to go, keep going, brother?
Yeah.
I mean, this...
Tableless discussion.
Yeah, might be another time.
Phone's got me, but... Yeah, let's try that.
Oh.
Is that... I don't know, it's not... Screen's not on. There you go.
Let's try.
Hey, John, can you call us on your mobile phone?
Can you call me? Can you actually, can you touch the microphone, so I can hear?
He's gonna wanna mute his audio picture.
I think it's his microphone that was captured.
Yeah.
All right, John, is that the number, is that the number?
Let's get...
Yeah.
Let me test it.
Yeah, it's just gonna at the bottom, and then, yeah.
So this is the test of all microphone. Hey, John. It's gonna be a mic... Oh, I wanna say, we're trying to patch you through the, um... We're trying to patch you through the, uh, the phone here, the caption.
Hey, yeah, yeah, we're...
Do you have a call, the call this...
They were suggesting closed caption.
All right.
Number two, closed caption.
Okay, five, zero. Too much information. Five, eight, seven. Six, zero, zero, three.
On the screen, I'm just gonna mute this figure.
He needs to mute his side, too, though. He needs to mute his audio, it's gonna fall through.
His microphone.
Do what we had to do.
You don't want the infinite loop, don't you?
All we did?
Pay dance. Pay dance, and then we music.
I can't hear it.
Yeah, I got the...
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
How's that sound there, brother?
All right, John, keep on talking for me.
Okay. I'm talking about the power cost adjustment.
Think we're... Think we're on the...
And, um...
Yeah.
I hope we can hear you now, but let me just start over.
You sound...
You're good, John, there.
You sound normal.
Okay. All right. So the PCA is adjusted twice a year, November 1st and May 1st. The factor that comes is our power cost. And with the new rate structure that was approved, the entire amount of power cost has been separated, and there's no longer any power cost in the base rate. The power cost calculation starts with our ANP bill. And in August, our ANP bill was $1,278,604. And that's slightly on the low side. Our ANP bill is usually more like one and a half million dollars. And if we have a very cold January or February, our bill could be two million dollars or more. The transmission and RPM or PJM capacity charges account for 65% of our bill. And most charges are essentially fixed. So if you think of it that way, there's only 35% of our bill, which is for energy, kilowatt hours. The calculation also includes the purchases we make from Open Bra and Coleman Falls, which is the other hydro plant on James River that we have a purchase power contract with. It also includes the purchases we make from our solar farm and the operating cost of the snowing plant. Also, the operating cost of our, uh... Well, we're showing no operating cost with the diesel units, but we do get credits for them. So we look at all that information, and we also get credits from PJM. And the net credit, for example, for snowing is about $20,000 a month. And that's beyond the operating cost of the plant. So we're getting paid to operate that plant. And that $20,000 a month does not include the value of the energy, which is probably another $50,000. So the snowing plant for us is a moneymaker. We do get credits for the diesel generators. And we also get some credits from what's called CIPA, which is our administration. We get a small amount of hydro energy from CIPA. This calculation is made based on a six-month... Six-six-month history. And it has those adjustments that I just talked about, the credits from PJM in particular. And then that is carried over and put on the bill. In our new bill, starting November 1st... I'm sorry, October 1st, when the new rate's gonna affect, we will show a higher PCA and a lower base rate charge. Because we pulled all the power costs out of base rates, and now they're in a separate charge. The best strategy we can have to reduce our bill is develop more, what's known as behind-the-meter generation. That would give us the benefit of lowering both transmissions and capacity cost going forward. We talked about options here, including diesel generators and possibly another solar facility. So that's kind of a quick summary of how the PCA works. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. Any particular questions?
Oh.
I might mention that we... We, um... Also buy from the market occasionally and sell into the market occasionally. In August, uh... We sold over a million kilowatt hours into... We purchased over a million kilowatt hours, and we sold about just under a million kilowatt hours into the market. And generally, for us, we have resources that are running... We have resources that are running, whether or not we need the energy. For example, the hydro plants are gonna run whenever there's water in the river. We also have contracts for two wind farms, and they're gonna... They're known as intermittent resources, and we're gonna generate when they have wind. So there are times when we have excess energy during the day, most likely off peak hours. And then there are times when we buy energy, and those are probably gonna be peak hours. So I'd be happy to take any questions. I apologize for the sound quality. But that's a kind of a general overview of the PCA and how it works.
Those wind farms, John, where are they located? In Ohio, or where were they?
There's one wind farm in Pennsylvania, and the other wind farm, I believe, is in Ohio.
Okay.
Right along the border with West Virginia.
Okay. The PJM part, you said it's 65% of the bill. Could you go over that part again?
The... We pay certain costs to PJM for transmission. Our transmission usage, which actually goes primarily to Appalachian Power Company. We pay a small charge for what's known as ancillary services, which is really frequency support. We pay a small amount of direct transmission cost for Prairie State. And we pay a large amount of capacity cost to PJM. The transmission and capacity components are 65% of our bill. And the transmission piece, our capacity responsibility is established at the time of the Appalachian power peak, which is generally in the winter time, on a cold day, at hour ending in AM in the morning. It was a wild day where PJM was airstepping between summer and winter peaks. When a PJM peaks in the summertime, we save between $50,000 and $100,000 a month. When they peak in the summertime, I'm sorry. So we always pray that PJM... That Appalachian Power Company will peak in the summertime. But so far, basically, they have not. They've gotten very close, but they're still winter peaking. And you might ask, why are we winter peaking? And it's because just about all of our customers have heat pumps. And electric heat is their primary heating source.
It makes a difference.
The RPM capacity costs are established based on the PJM's five peak hours, which are generally in the summer. And that, those peak hours have been creeping up later and later. This year, they were generally around six o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah. Well... That's a whole lot of information right there. I want to digest it, if y'all have questions. Stacy, Jay? Yeah, I kinda like...
I might add, with the, uh... Thinking of PJM, the reason why those prices went up so high is because they're trying to encourage building more generating capacity. So they're trying to give a greater amount of revenue to potential generators. I don't think it's working, at least here in the short term, because there's so much regulatory uncertainty with building a new plant that people are not... Investors are not willing to put up $500 million or so for a new plant. Unless they're sure they can recover that cost over the life of the plant. And with the regulatory uncertainty we have, nobody's willing to take that risk at the moment.
About how long would it take for a new plant to be built?
The quickest would be five years, but somewhere between five and 10 years, depending on the permitting. Like in Virginia, the permitting is a little bit more difficult than, say, in Pennsylvania. And most new plants are gonna be gas-fired, so there has to be pipeline capacity to serve these plants. There is some of that in Southern Virginia. Not much will be available in Northern Virginia. Right now, Virginia is a net energy importer. And Pennsylvania is a net energy exporter. And the governor of Pennsylvania has said to Virginia and Maryland to pick up their amount of generation because Pennsylvania is sick and tired of exporting energy to us.
Wow. Is anyone listening?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is anyone listening to what they're saying? Pennsylvania's saying?
Boy, that's a good question. You know, it all depends on the regulatory environment. Who's the governor? Who's... Who's running the regulatory authorities? The reason why there's so much generation in Pennsylvania is because they have shale gas, and they build the plants right on top of the shale gas wells. gas and they build new plants right on top of the shale gas wells. And they'll need a pipeline. Then they're just exporting the energy that way. So, yeah, I don't know if anybody's listening in Virginia. I know AMP is considering putting a plant in Virginia. However, we don't know if that's going to happen. Right now, it's just the very, very beginning of the planning stages.
Hey, John, all this information that you gave us, does that have, what impact is that going to have on the customer's monthly bill in the, in the short term?
Well, I think what Bart and I discussed, I think I mentioned it in the previous time I appeared before you, is we would like to go forward with the rates as provided by the consultant. And if we had an under recovery from the previous six months, we would not, we would not attempt to recover that. But that's really your decision, that's my recommendation. If we had an over recovery, of course, we'd want to recognize that and reduce the PCA. I just got today some more data that I will need to calculate that. So I will have that calculation probably next week to tell us where we're going to We, we kind of would like to get information from next month as well, but sometimes we don't get enough information to include October in that calculation because some of this data lags behind. We, we can't wait till the end of the month, we've got to get this done by the middle of the month. So I suspect that the, this month will be probably the last month we have in the calculation. Perhaps we'll get some October information, but normally I would not count on it. September's probably the last month we'll have.
So I have a question.
So, so the bottom line is I'm hoping that we don't have any additional cost to pass along.
Okay. I have a question. Do you hear me, John?
Yes, I can.
So with this information you gave us, are you, are you expecting an increase in the PCA in November or we're going to not have one until May, six months from now?
Well, it's just hard to say because there's so many dynamic factors in play. The main one for us is weather. If we have mild winter conditions, we should be okay. If we have a harsh winter, we probably won't get some sort of additional recovery. But we are so weather sensitive, we're weather sensitive in terms of our customers' usage, of course, because they're using electricity for heating. And we're also very weather sensitive because we have many renewable energy resources which, which count on the wind and the water and weather and the sun to produce energy.
Okay, so going back to our meeting minutes, August of 26th, there was a comment you made that said it's not likely there will be another increase needed in November of 2025. So that's my...
But, yeah, that's, if you, that's what I'm trying to say is, I don't anticipate, I'm recommending that if we have a shortfall in the last six months, that we do not try and recover that cost.
If for some reason it's positive...
We'll not have another increase in 2025.
And I, and John, I'm trying to, if for some reason it turns out to be positive, we will recommend an adjustment to bring the PCA down. But that's probably overly optimistic.
Yeah, so the major time to adjust it would be May 1st. And that will really depend on what happens over the winter. But we may need to make a slight change in the wording if we decide not to recover any shortfall. Because the way the PCA is written now, it's, it's required that we recover that unless we're allowed, given any permission not to recover it.
All right.
We do know that capacity costs will be going up again on June 1st. PJM has already had the capacity auction for next year. And remember, it's going up somewhat for June 1st.
One last question. Have we done anything else about looking for a solar farm or in the town, anything like that, any spot that we could put another solar farm to help out on the cost for the citizens? Because I mean...
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because actually I toured an area with the mayor which is over behind Elk's Lot, Elk's Home. If you know where the cemetery is, it's the area immediately north of the cemetery. It's about forty acres that we would like to, we've been talking about trying to develop that property for some time. So that would be one option. And the other option would be to go ahead, we've had AMP on-site to give us a proposal to add more diesel generators. And we're still waiting for them to give us those numbers.
And regular solar farm now, do we have any option to grow any or any thing to expand at that location?
There is no more space at that location. We have talked to WSP, which is the consultant that the town uses for the landfills. And I need to come back to you and ask you for an appropriation to do a feasibility study to add solar to the two landfills, two closed landfills. Initially, WSP has said that they think there should be no physical issue, but they'll need to do more study before we can finalize that. They probably have to take some core samples of the ground, that kind of thing. And so I need to come back to you with a request, I don't know if we're going to have to do it, or if we could just use, use that consultant. We'll have to see what they think the amount of money would be for that study. Oh, before I forget to mention, we also have an ongoing study with WSP, as it turns out, to increase the capacity at Snowden. And we're working on that. I hope to get that information in time to apply for a tobacco commission grant to take it back to the next level as well.
All right, what else?
Well, I'll say that all of those, all of those things are long-term solutions, but none of those are going to happen quickly.
Yeah, short-term, real short-term.
Energy's only going to go up. The more we address now, it's cheaper in the long run.
Yeah. So basically, John, if we can get going on some type of solar project or anything of that nature, diesel, the sooner the better. Because it's going to take a while.
Yes, yes. The diesel project probably will be the quickest turnaround. Solar will be next. If we can come up with a site, in addition to the site behind the Elk's Home, we talked about the Ellen property, which is on the other side of town, which I believe is eighty acres. That's up behind East Hill Crossing. And that's something we talked about previously and we have a few several steps to get it appraised and we just could not come to agreement on a price for that property. Unfortunately, the county does not have favorable zoning for solar projects. I know Bart has talked to the county administrator and others and it doesn't seem like they're going to move on that. Property outside the town in our category is much cheaper. But we don't have very many parcels within the town limits where we control the zoning that we could develop at this time.
Any more questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. I don't think we have any more questions at this time. I did, well, is anyone looking at the property at Elk's Home or talking to anyone about that or Owen's property? I know we had talked about someone looking into that, but are we...
Yeah, we certainly have the contact with the Owens folks. The property down at Elk's Home, we believe is owned by the same people that are doing the developments. So we have not been able to reach anybody there, but we'll keep trying.
Okay. All right, sounds good. That's all we can do.
Are y'all okay?
And, and look, again, I apologize for the quality of the sound here. But if you have any more questions, feel free to contact me. I'd be happy to explain anything you want and give you any additional information that you'd like to have.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Oh, yes.
I'd like to say that when I, when, when this PCA stuff first came out, I did some research. And it turns out that, that part of our problem, besides the fact that we're not really well-suited for solar and, and wind and water because of our terrain, and we are a net power importer, there was a law passed that made Appalachian Power and Dominion go totally so, totally renewable by 2045 and 2050. And that is going to increase all of our costs because I don't think we can manage it. I don't think we can get to that. So unless that law is repealed, allowing Virginia to explore other sources, we are in deep doggy doo-doo, to put it mildly.
I tend to agree.
And there is, I will send Mr. Warner or whoever wants it, a copy of the energy report because I looked it up, there's a whole report on US energy usage by state. And it talks about all of this.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments and that, you are correct, the two investor utilities must meet those targets, but they do not apply to us. We are exempt.
Oh, and one more thing. AEP and Dominion have no cap on what it costs them to develop solar and renewables, which means they're going to pass all those development costs on to us.
Thank you. Yep, that's the way it is, yep. Any comments, John, or any more?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the issue is the current governor has stated he is for all of the above options, which makes sense. He's for natural gas options, potential coal options, and the renewable options. But unfortunately, as we know, because we are heavily invested in renewables, that they are what's known as intermittent resources. They're not dispatchable. So when we generate, that, that is, that's fine. Sometimes, you know, we'll have so much water in the river that we're generating quite a bit of energy or wind is blowing, we're generating quite a bit of energy or the sun is shining. But when those things aren't present, we have a shortfall and we've got to rely on thermal resources, which we want our partners in something called Crown State, which is the newest coal-fired power plant in the country, and also the Fremont Gas Project, which is a combined cycle gas unit. And they provide a combined share of our energy. Between those two resources, they're providing over fifty percent of our energy. And those are both AMP projects.
Yes.
So I look forward to recommending everybody to, you know, move forward with a solar project or increase capacity at November, or perhaps building some more diesel generators.
Yep. And we look forward to eventually getting that done, or getting it started, I should say. Appreciate it, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Christmas is, what, three months away? If you want to call it that.
That's news, anyway.
Y'all want to take a break? Okay, the...
Anything else we need to...
The adjourned meeting is over.
Yeah. We should have moved to the tele...
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. That really sounded good. Everyone in here saying the Pledge of Allegiance, I could see that go, hear it bouncing off the walls. Thank you. First order of business is we have to allow, uh, Councilman Foreman in on the meeting by Zoom. Uh, Todd, if you would, tell us where you are and where you have to be on Zoom.
I am in Pursuit Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, this is the second time for my work that has required me to leave town for, um, to be away from the town of Bedford, so I have to be here to work.
All right. Is everyone okay with that? Allowing Todd to be on Zoom?
Why don't we make an official motion and second it and vote on it, make it official, if that's what...
Is that what you want?
Yes, sir, that would, I'll make a motion if we let Todd, Mr. Foreman, be official to this meeting.
We, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Todd?
Mr. Appolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman? Vote yourself. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting aye.
Okay, Todd, you are welcome to join us on Zoom. Can you hear us?
Thanks, sir. Yeah.
All right, uh, first order of business, approval of minutes. You all have, have the opportunity to review those, look over them, any changes or additions, then they stand as is, approved as is. For the benefit of everyone in here tonight, I'm going to change the agenda around, and I am going to move the discussion regarding renaming the town next order of business, if council approves that, if you're okay with it. Okay. You okay with that, Todd? Okay. Uh, because I think it may answer a lot of questions, maybe save time and, uh, get you all out of here if, if you so desire. Uh, we do have other businesses to discuss, but it will maybe answer some of your questions. So with that, we're going to discuss, the discussion regarding renaming the town. And I'm going to start this off, then I'm going to give each council member the opportunity to talk about it, share their feelings, and then we are going to take a vote. So we have it on record. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. It really tells me that, uh, you all are concerned about little things that, uh, were mentioned and that concern you. And I do appreciate the turnout and the people I have talked to in person, I've gotten emails from, and, and phone calls. I do appreciate it, and I mean that sincerely. I want to hear your opinions. Uh, we, we do a lot of things. We try to do everything right, but, uh, we can never please everyone. I just came back from 10 days of Myrtle Beach. Uh, I came back to this firestorm. Uh, I got some calls while I was down there, but I appreciated it. Excuse me. But anyway, do not ever hesitate to give me a call, or you see me somewhere, uh, in town or anywhere else, I will talk to you. I'm very open-minded and appreciate, uh, comments and, uh, thoughts people give me. Let me start this out. I have some notes here, and I'm not real sure where to start, so I'll just jump in. At our last council meeting, um, Vice Mayor Updike mentioned about putting an act, action item on the agenda, and we all said, okay. It was talked about. And the town manager was given the, uh, direction to just look into that possibility. No votes were taken in any way, shape, or form to rename the town to Liberty or anything else of that nature. So I want that understood. But the, the next day or so, I called Mr. Warner and I told him, I said, "War, do not go any further on this. I'd like for this, uh, item to be put on the next council meeting agenda for us to discuss." Cause I don't think it's going anywhere, and I do not want to spend any time or, or energy on this. And to this date, no time or energy or money has been spent on researching this or anything. So I want that made clear. I heard some, uh, a- on researching this or anything. So I want that made clear. I heard some comment made at Centertown this past, or Centerfest this past Saturday that Mr. Warner was already at Public Works getting new signs made up and different things going on, but all I can say is Bedford, the rumor mill gets its own legs and goes. But there is absolutely no truth at all to any of that. I will say, I did not support this from the start, but I do appreciate open conversation. The intent was good, and I'm not going to fault anyone here. We all agreed to it. But it, as I said to my wife, I said, "This thing just seemed to have swallowed an entire bottle of steroids and created a life of its own and just took off." And I mean, it in flying colors. But nonetheless, we're going to get it settled tonight here shortly and put it to rest. I was born and raised here. We are Bedford. We have our own identity. We have D-Day. We have the Bedford Boys. We have War One, the Civil War, Revolutionary War. There is a lot of history in this community that I'm not going to give up. It is a lot that we can be proud of. The name Bedford, to me, carries a lot of weight. I'm proud, when I'm anywhere else, I say to people, places I visit, places we go, "I'm from Bedford, and I'm proud of it." And when I think of what the process would have taken for that, I mean, I'm not going to go into detail, but as many of you all know, I spent, worked 34 years at Appalachian Power, and I think in the 90s, they went through a logo change from AppCo to AEP Appalachian Power. I don't remember the exact figure, but it was millions of dollars for the service building sign change, the vehicle decal change, uniforms, hats, letterhead. I mean, everything that had AppCo on it had to be changed. And I got to thinking more about that here, not just for the town. It's money we don't need to spend, but at the same time, the signage, the letterhead, and all that would not be worth it. But I would not support that. And then, all the people in the community, in the town, I mean, your addresses, you have to change, your driver's license, everything would have to be changed to go to a new name. And I have no clue how much headache that would be. I don't know for the DMV, for the post office. I have no idea how they would handle that, maybe a hundred more people. But then, you get to the businesses. And my goodness, just like I just talked about with my previous employer, the signage, the buildings, the letterhead, truck decals, you know, it just, it's, when you get to really thinking all that through, it just is, it's mind-blowing as to one little thought, that domino effect to just keep on rolling and heaven forbid the things that you don't think of that pop up, "Oh, I didn't think of that." But I have no idea, and I don't want to know, what that would cost, this community in general. But again, we are Bedford. I'm sorry that this, as I say, swallowed that bottle of steroids and got pumped up and got its own strength and moved on like it did, but I do appreciate you all coming out tonight and making sure I did not miss anything. But again, as I said, I, from the get, from the start, was opposed to this, but I do encourage all council members to think out of the box, and I admire that. But again, this was a little, little, little bigger than what we thought. But nonetheless, we'll, I feel like, take care of it tonight. So... Jay, what do you say?
I say no, we don't need to do it.
Jason?
So, I like the idea of thinking out of the box sometimes, but in the process of this idea that was thought outside the box, it caused turmoil, anger, confusion. You know, we rebranded like eight, nine years ago here in the town. We rebranded the emblem of the town and stuff like that. This costs thousands of dollars to do that. And, you know, people didn't like the logo at first when we changed it to the new logo, but after a while, people grew on the new logo. But that was just changing the logo, rebranding the town in the sense that we actually had meetings on rebranding the town emblem. But rebranding the town itself, I mean, you would almost erase 135 years of history. You would do stuff like that where, like, we was talking about building a new police station and maybe a new fire department down the road or something like that, train station, what money we were spending in rebranding the town itself and the name. A lot of that projects would probably never happen in down the road while most of us sit on council up here. You know, and you know, they're talking about help economic development downtown. There's still a lot of stuff that we can do downtown. They still have facial grants, stand there. You can apply for loans to help get your businesses done. You know, we talk about try to rebrand the name of the town. I mean, really, we need to start focusing on stuff like sidewalks and stuff downtown where we have neglected over the years. You know, I have no problem with ideas, but when it costs much conflict, it has over the last week or so, two weeks, it just, it's not. It was almost a devastating thing that happened, because you know how Bedford became Bedford? The Daniel Liberty was the, like a village, and they had a devastating fire back in the 1880s. So in 1890, they renamed the town of Bedford. So in the process of that happening, I just don't want to throw away our history as Bedford. We are Bedford, and that's what I have said.
Todd, what do you have?
I agree with everyone else. It costs will be too much. I've talked to, I mean, more people have called me about this than any other issue within the town discussing with me. And I have not heard one positive response since the town. Everybody's wanting to keep the name the same, and I think back to when we changed from a city to the town, would it just cost the police department and changing patches, parts of the vehicles and those mistakes? And that was an expensive cost, cost by a person. So I just don't see us making no changes. And as you said there, there's a lot of history with the name of Bedford, Bedford Boys and such, and I had that conversation with a lot of people at meetings. So I would not, I would not be for it.
Thank you.
Well, I guess y'all want to hear from me, don't you? Anybody read any good Facebook posts lately? Councilman Haley brought up, you know, some, some very interesting points, and, you know, I agree with the direction that he's going in and with all the comments. You know, I was kind of deciding which way to go. Do I give you guys the Reader's Digest version or do I just go into some detail? Up till a few moments ago, I was just going to give you the Reader's Digest version, but, but here we go. Yeah, Councilman Haley brought some very good points. You know, we need to start focusing on our sidewalks. Yeah, we should have been focusing on sidewalks a long time ago. Things about sidewalks and street repairs come up before this council, previous councils, a number of times, but we're still at the same place. For decades, you know, we've been hearing that we need to bring, you know, more, more commerce downtown. Absolutely right. Absolutely right. But how do we do that? Okay? And that's where this body, this community, has struggled to come up with answers. We tend to want to do the same thing over and over again, and now we're expecting different results. Okay? So again, you know, just trying to, you know, find out what would be involved with something like this, with the details. I am really glad to see everyone here. Some of the phone calls I got the last two weeks weren't quite as pleasant, but, but, but they were productive just the same. You know, I'm glad people are calling, you know? Not so glad they're upset, but glad to call in and I want to hear what's on their mind. That's kind of what we're up here to do, to represent and find out what it is that the people of the community want. You know, my personal history, growing up in this area, from about the period of 1976, 75, up until about 1983, I commonly heard this place called Bedrock, not because of anything related to the Flintstone Town, because we were so far behind the times. We did not have anything to offer. We didn't have putt-putt. We didn't have movie theaters to go to. We didn't have malls to hang out in. We still don't have those type of things. Now, some of those ideas or those philosophies are slowly, you know, fading into the sunset like movie theaters. And I'll talk about movie theaters just for a second. For years, you know, I have heard about Bedford is a movie theater. Well, our town manager tried, not once, not twice, but three times to bring a movie theater here. And each time, the answer was the same. You just don't have the population. Okay? So we're, again, we're stuck back to where we were. We're still in that bedrock, you know, kind of mindset that other people see us in. So I am all favor of closing this matter out because of two things. One, because it's price cost prohibitive, and that's one of the first things that I mentioned when I proposed the idea at the last meeting. Let's try this as long as it's not cost prohibitive. But the most important reason is because of public opinion. If you guys don't want it, I don't want it either. But we still have those same concerns that not just as council and not just the staff, but as a community, we all need to come together and address, how is it that we're going to get those things that we would like to see here in town? If it's a commercial enterprise, if it's a clothing store or, or, or a, or a athletic supply, you know, type of thing, that's awesome. And if we could pull that rabbit out of our hat and make that happen, my next question is, are we going to shop there? Are we going to go to Roanoke or Lynchburg or shop online to do that? Are we going to support those types of endeavors if we get them here? So this is, this is a question that we're all going to have to answer, and we need y'all's input to tell us, how is it that you want us to proceed? We all know what the problems are. You know, we've been talking about the same problems for the last 35, 40 years, and we've been going about it the same way. Yes, it was an out-of-the-box kind of a thing, you know. I was hoping that it would generate some conversation. Maybe not caught it quite.
It created a lot.
Quite, you know, quite the way that it did. But, you know, we've got, you know, several, several big things, not to say it's in the small thing. I try to minimize that. But we've got some things coming up on the future that we need to address as council, and we need your input. We're losing a three-quarters of a million dollar in our budget as a result of the reversion agreement. That's coming to a close. This building, as nice as it is, it is in serious need of repair, to the tune of about a million dollars. Add that to the three-quarters. Now we're at $2 million, and we're trying to figure out where to come from, and we already got a strapped budget. You know, there's no slough in our budget. Our electric department director, when we come up, when he comes up for budget, he gets grilled heavily. We scrutinize everything that's done. But we need your direction. You know, what is it that you want from us? Don't just identify the problems. We've kind of got an idea what the problems are. We need solutions, how to fix these things. But I play one else, you know. If the folks here are against this, then so am I. And that's all I got.
Appreciate it. Boyd?
Yes, I'd like to echo basically what Councilman Updike and the rest of councilmen said, but again, he emphasized y'all's support, and I appreciate all y'all's emails, all the phone calls and the visits while I was standing in the road. It's, it's very important anyway to hear from y'all. And it shows me that, you know, y'all are very concerned about the town, and I am too. And I, and I appreciate y'all's, y'all's support about this issue. And again, I'm against name change.
Last but not least, I won't, I won't plow over old ground. I agree with what the mayor and other council members have said. I'm against it, not only fiscally, but, you know, operationally and public opinion. Like he has said, you, you, major voices heard. And again, this is, this is what a democracy is. I appreciate the phone, like everybody said, the phone calls, the emails, or whatever. It was, it's welcome, and I, not only on this issue, but all the other issues that Vice Mayor talked about coming up, things that we've got, the strategic planning coming, you know, it's just, it's going to be an interesting two or three years, and your support and your voice needs to be heard back from us so we can do what's best for the town.
Thank you. Good yard. Everybody okay? Todd, you have anything else?
If we want to vote on any motion, then we do not change the name of the town.
Second.
Okay. Did you get that? Let the town of Bedford remain Bedford and not change to Liberty or anything else. You all okay with that?
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion to not change the name of Bedford carries with all members voting aye.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming out. Those? Thank you. Those who still want to speak, you're welcome to. It was probably, I think, what we just talked about, but you're more than welcome to stick around and speak as the agenda carries on here. But again, I can't say enough how much I do appreciate all you all coming and showing your concern and voicing your opinion to me publicly by phone and by email. Thank you very much. And again, this is one of the rare moments that we all were in 100% agreement. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann DeLong, 1512 Clearview Road. I posted on Facebook this morning an open letter to the town council concerning the issue of the name change. We've already discussed it, and you voted, so I won't read the letter at the moment, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to relay to everybody. But there were a couple of things that I wanted to relay to everybody here about that process. In the space of six hours, I got over three hundred and thirty-two people signing on to this letter. And there are at least fifty that I have not been able to pull off my phone since I left the house to come to the meeting, and I'm standing here before you. This is over six percent of the voting population of Bedford in a period of six hours mobilized to come together on this issue. If we can do it to oppose a name change, then we ought to be able to do it, to come together, to move forward in a positive direction. And so I just want to thank the town council and commend you for bringing everybody together in such a positive way. Um, and encourage you and all of the citizens of Bedford to utilize this opportunity and really to work together so that we can make this the best little town and the town that we know and love. Thank you.
Thank you. So what you're saying, it was a pretty, it, it was a pretty good little marketing scheme, right? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Let's move on. But, uh, but, yeah, you're exactly right. I mean, we can come together, we can solve our problems, and, and by working together. I mean, we're, we're not always going to have the same opinions on everything, but once we have our goals set as what we want, we can accomplish a lot by working together. Again, I thank you very much. I appreciate what, uh, everybody's said.
I just want to say that there was a big change from watching the first proposal on, online and coming here tonight, and it was a very positive change. Because it was like from crickets to everybody was on the same page. You know, everybody was like in shock for a while, so I'm really impressed that, and Mayor, thank you for doing more research on the, on the subject. And I know that some people were mad and, and, you know, quick to say whatever. But what I saw was passion. I saw passion in the community that kind of gets a little sleepy once in a while, but I want to thank residents for coming out and being passionate about their town. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on. Report of Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley, members of council. Just a few things. Wanted to start by thanking Heather Alto and the Central Virginia Business Coalition for presenting Center Fest this past Saturday. Also want to let folks know that our annual fall cleanup event will take place for one week from October sixth to October tenth, wherein the town will be offering our seasonal, seasonal pickup service to help customers dispose of unwanted items. Residents must have a current town trash removal service account to participate. Pickup of items is intended to take place on your regularly scheduled trash service day. If you miss your pickup day, current customers can deliver their unwanted items to the town's landfill located at eight fifty-six Horn Street, free of charge during the event. And I will sum up by saying, with regard to the name change discussion, I will confess, I did not invest a great amount of effort in response. I did consult a colleague who was a former commander of an air force base whose name was changed, and he did give me a starting number in terms of our internal cost that was pretty darn high. That concludes my report.
I am not surprised. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Foreman?
I'm sorry, point of order, do we approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, I missed that.
Okay, I have now appearances before council. I have a list. Uh, if you all still want to come and talk, you're more than welcome to. Uh, first one I had was, uh, Danny Kirby. Okay. Uh, Jane McKinn.
She only spoke.
Okay, yeah. Uh, Ann DeLong? Okay, yes. Uh, Candy Shakur?
I appreciate you all keeping the name the same. Could you all come out and feel about? We talk about downtown, and I've talked to you about this too. It's a maintenance problem. We've got the same people owning the same buildings for years and years, and they're deteriorating, and they're actually dangerous. Is there a standard of maintenance or something for these buildings that you can, I mean, enforce and make them fix them up, sell them, or do something? I think that would help a whole lot. And the other thing is, we've got these two hotels, I guess will be underway, they're underway. They'll be open in at least a year, I guess. That's going to bring a lot of people to town, so we need to get the town cleaned up and new businesses starting. I guess there are incentives for new businesses, but I do think if we can clean up the town and those lone landlords are made to fix up their buildings, you'll see a big difference.
Thank you, Candy. Oh, Leslie?
Thank you, council, for your decision tonight. You've settled a lot of hearts, minds, and whatnot. There's been a lot of talk about history. Yes, I have on a shirt that says Bedford seventeen fifty-four. That is when the county was formed. Um, and, and the town itself, Stacy, uh, he hinted to this, that, uh, the name, the town of Liberty became in seventeen eighty-two. That had to do with New London, who was the seat of our county, was absorbed by Campbell County. So, there had to be a new county seat, and Liberty was established then in seventeen eighty-two. I just want to say, history, I'm affiliated with the Bedford Museum. It is one of the most beautiful buildings in the town of Bedford. It was built in eighteen ninety-five for the Liberty Masonics, and they stayed there and for a good number of years before they moved out on Longwood Avenue. I invite each and every one of you to take the time to stop by the Bedford Museum and see the wealth of history that we have. We collect, we interpret, and we preserve Bedford history. We're open Monday through Friday, ten to five, and Saturday, ten to three. We did take a little hiatus, uh, back in the early part of the year, and we were closed on Saturdays. But we are a business that is open each and every day in this town. And if you've not taken the opportunity to stop in and see what's there, I highly encourage that you do. There is a five-dollar admission, but as chairman of the board, if you will call me, I will give you a personal tour. I'll explain each one, every one of our artifacts, and I'll waive the five-dollar admission. So, please, come see this beautiful building, what we have. We have everything from Native American, Black history, World War I, World War II, Company eight hundred and sixteenth Battalion. We have a Civil War exhibit on the third floor. And right now, because of the Bedford Vietnam Veterans Memorial being built, we have an exhibit that is dedicated to our Vietnam veterans in our rotating exhibit area. That will be running through the end of this year. I encourage you, of course, to come to our dedication, November twenty-second at eleven o'clock. And I believe most of you did receive a personal invitation. Please respond and come by the museum and see the Vietnam Veterans Exhibit too. Thank you all.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you. All right, I have a Hugh Letterman.
I'd just like to point out, I moved here four years ago, and the traffic is just so much better than the DC area. I've lived in those parts of DC, so, but importantly, let's not forget what this small town does so well. We have very little traffic. We have far less drug and crime and physical assault issues than our neighbors to the north and the south. So, you do things very well in that regard. Yes, I miss being able to go to Smithsonian Downtown in DC, but I get a lot of advantages by living here otherwise. And I, when I moved here, I'll share this with you really quick. My cousin, who had his Haberdulcimer, a professional musician, made by a resident of the town here. He said, "Where do you live in Bedford? You've got him, kid." And he asked me what it was like. And my explanation was, it was like a more modernized Mayberry Cross with, um, Back to the Future. So, I, I applaud Mr. Updike's, um, bringing this up. Um, it's good to throw out ideas and see what could be done. And the turnout here is, is quite evident of that. Now, we can just turn that into some positive story, but it's going to be hard to, hard to bring additional revenues in since the town was incorporated, I guess, or whatever it was called. I went back and looked at it. I don't think that was a good idea, but that's past history as this is. If you want to change a name, perhaps change the name of the high school to Bedford High School.
Thank you. All right, finally, Irene Kaplan. Must be gone, okay. All right, then that is, uh, concludes everyone who, uh, wanted to talk. Teacher, we know you, but is that your name and the, and address?
Well, my name is Susan Kirby. I live on Watson Place in town. Uh, excuse my appearance, I wasn't prepared to do this, but I just kind of jumped in it real quick, I came to support Danny. First of all, gentlemen, I do not envy the position you guys have been in the past couple of weeks. I know how the heat comes about, and I think you guys handled it with class and dignity, and I, and I appreciate it. Uh, it is wonderful to see everyone come out here to stand up for their hometown, for all of us to work together. Because I used to say during my time on the school board, when people would not say anything, it was complete apathy that complacency implies consent. And we can tell that no one has given consent for any name change. But while I was sitting there, I had a couple of things that I just wanted to put up in front of you guys for some more consideration. I know that, um, there's now a charge for the business trash pickup. I need, I was wondering if you guys could possibly reconsider that? Because how is that going to entice new businesses? If we are promoting community growth, or community development, how's that going to entice anyone to come in? We have to pay extra because we have a business? Um, and when Mr. Warner said that we could take our things to the landfill during cleanup if we missed that, would it be a consideration to possibly extending those times if the landfill is open? For those of us that work, I can't take a half a day off to take an old couch to the landfill. You know, if we could at least extend the times during that period, or on a Saturday, would be great. Um, my main concern, though, coming tonight, was the selling of the land. Um, and I've been there, done that too. I just want to encourage you guys to make sure you do not sell it, um, for a super low price. And also to consider that if anything were to ever have to happen in dispersing your assets, and if you were to have to take out a debt service program, we want to make sure you maintain enough collateral for whatever you're going to need. Um, and I, again, I have dealt with this too, the reversions and the money and the shortfall of the budget. God bless you for going through that too. But, um, sometimes you just want to sit back and refine, go through with a fine-tooth comb and figure out what little things, because remember, those little things mean a lot, and it won't hurt anyone or anyone can save. And finally, of course, you know, I got to put in a plug for the parks. I appreciate the, the focus on sidewalks and the street repairs, but our parks really need attention, guys. I went, I stopped by Montville, I was coming home from the oncologist, I stopped by, um, Montville Park. They have a brand-new water fountain, and they have running water in their bathrooms. And so just follow the creek. So if anyone goes to the bathroom, they can actually flush it. Um, and I know I've been up to the ports many times, and there are kids all over the place, and with these hot, hot days, they need a place where they can go get some water. Their parents are going to put them in a car, haul them twenty-some acres and come back to play some more. You're cutting their playtime short. So, I mean, that needs to be a consideration too. And again, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. Council comments. Dave Lee Edwards.
No, I just, again, thanks for coming out. I think there was a pretty good crowd for Center Fest as well, so thanks for everybody that attended that and, uh, put on, uh, other than that. Said enough to honor tonight.
Roy?
Uh, again, I want to thank everybody that ended up showing up tonight and, you know, just showing your support and, like, for us. And, and listening to us, and we do listen to y'all. And you're right about the parks. We're, we have a plan for the parks. We just got to discuss that a little bit more. Thank y'all.
Well, again, thank y'all for, uh, for coming out. Uh, I think, uh, Center Fest was, uh, was a pretty successful event. There was, uh, several people that, um, that I spoke with, um, that some was their first time. They weren't really from the area, but how they found out, I didn't get to that. But, you know, they were having a good time there. Um, you know, a couple of kids stopped by the little booth that I was at and, and, you know, asked them how things were going, and, you know, they got like, you know, cotton candy or something all up the side of their cheek. "Man, it's fun," you know, whatever. So, you know, so from young to old, everybody seemed like they was having, having a good time. Um, let's see, tonight, um, the American Legion Post fifty-four is actually celebrating their hundred and sixth anniversary of, of being here in, uh, in the, in this community. So, uh, applaud them for that, and, uh, we hope that, uh, that they continue doing what they're doing. Uh, also like to commend the, um, our EDA and, uh, Mary Circle, and other members of the town staff that have put the energy in that they've had for the, um, for the new, uh, metal works, if I get your, Metal Workforce Training Center. If you're not familiar with that, it is the old, uh, um, foundry at the end of town. Um, what was it, what was it called? Wheel of Rater Frye when I first got here, okay? Uh, and so we have, uh, re-designated that as a training center. Uh, we just got information that all the things that, that we felt like were, were positive things, we got confirmation that, that yes, that in the, in the very near future, there's going to be a shortage of metal workers and the ability to, to make those kinds of things, uh, from small employers all the way up to the Department of Defense. And, uh, they are looking to have an open house here very soon. I have forgotten the date off the top of my head, but it's coming up soon.
October first?
October first. And, um, you know, we look forward to meeting some of the, the, the other tenants that have, um, in, in the past have, have, have expressed interest in being part of it, and we'll just see, uh, see where that takes us. But that's, that's certainly a, a plus for the community. Um, and beyond that, um, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, thank to all the employees that worked Center Fest on Saturday, but it was a great event in the town here. Uh, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and supporting Bedford.
Todd, what do you have?
I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone for being there, and I really do appreciate the, uh, the passion that everybody had while spoken to all the council members the past two weeks. But I also appreciate the Vice Mayor and his thoughts, how he's thinking outside of the box. I know it was, it's difficult for times to throw up with ideas, but I do appreciate that. And then I also wanted to mention the museum. The museum is a great thing to visit. I would suggest it. Um, I probably haven't been there maybe once since I retired, uh, but it is a great place to visit, so I'd suggest everybody visit the museum again. And thank you for being here again.
All right. Jay?
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's nice to look out here and see this big crowd of people. Um, I want to thank Ann, maybe she'll run for council, I think you'd do great. Um, Jane, you did, it's good seeing you out here tonight. Candy, I agree with you one hundred percent. There is some stuff that can be done that we're going to get into works on to try to see what we can do about that. Leslie, if you ever need to know anything about Bedford, go to Leslie. She can tell you. Mr. DC, I didn't catch your name, but thank you for coming out. We appreciate you tonight. And Susan, as always, it's good to see you. We're working on the parks. We haven't forgot you on the parks. We're getting there slowly, but we're getting there. So, and Patty Witten. I E, it's good to see you here. That's all I have.
And Susan, I'd like to just echo, you know, one of the things that you said. Mr. Warner, if we could consider that expanding the landfill operations during that fall, I mean, that was, when I was, when he was going over, I was like, yeah, we need to extend those hours. That midday closing thing just seemed like it goes counterproductive with what we're trying to do during that, especially during that time of.
All right. I'm just echoing pretty much what's already been said. I did go to Center Fest Saturday morning, looked like a good crowd, a good setup. I saw people there and talked to them. I did talk to Heather Alto, and she was very pleased with the way things had gone, and wants to get with us and talk about a few more things in the future. Susan and others about downtown, we are having a work session. We're a retreat in October. We're gonna talk about a lot of this. And we do have an ongoing downtown strategy program going on that is looking at downtown. Mary Zirkle got a $50,000 grant, brought this group in here, and it has really had some really great ideas that I've bought into, that now it's up to us and the business owners and property owners to look at them and see what we can do. But they do give us options as to what we can do moving forward. I am looking forward to more information on that, and I think it's some great news. Leslie, the museum, I would tell you, Leslie can tell you a lot about Bedford. And, I mean, a lot, so. But I do need to come by there. I did, I told you, I have some items that I want you all to look at that I've had a good part of my life, that I'm in this mode of getting rid of things, so I want you all to take a look at them and see if it's worth anything or not.
As long as it's all Bedford-related, we'll be glad to do so.
Yeah, right, it is. But again, the crowd, I appreciate you all coming out tonight. It shows you care. Didn't mean, again, with this idea to snowball the way it did, but it shows that you do care, you are listening and paying attention, and we do appreciate it. All right, no report of council committees? And I don't think we're gonna revise the agenda.
Actually, I do need to request Warner's revision. We've had a request from the Bedford YMCA to do a street closure for their annual Peaks of Honor Christmas Classic Foot Race to be held Saturday, December 6th. So if we could add that to the consent agenda, I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one other comment if I may.
Sure.
I mentioned the Bedford Vietnam Veterans Memorial. I'm happy to report that our board has purchased banners of each one of the 14 men that died in Vietnam. They will be special. They will be the Vietnam colors of yellow, green, and red, and a picture of each one of these veterans will be on these banners. They will be unveiled at our dedication, and I just wanna thank Jay Ippolito for making the possibility of us to get into contact with the business to have these made. And they're gonna be, they're gonna be eye-catching. We need some things in this town that are eye-catching. These banners will be. So, thank you, Jay. And again, just remember our 14 Vietnam veterans.
We will. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, we're on to public hearings. Mr. Warner?
Notice is hereby given that the Town Council of the Town of Bedford at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 23rd, will hold a public hearing to consider a budget amendment for fiscal year 2026 to appropriate funding for outstanding fiscal year 2025 purchase orders in an amount not to exceed $876,309. Copy of the detailed budget amendment request has been available for inspection in the office of the clerk of the town council.
All right, anyone that would like to speak? This public hearing is now open. No one wants to have any words of wisdom or anything, so the public hearing is closed. All right, new business, reappraisal of.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Let's go with the Y.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Bedford area family YMCA is requesting permission to hold their annual Peaks of Honor Christmas Classic Foot Race on Saturday, December 6th, and to close the streets around the loop, which of course is Peaks, Whitfield, Oakwood, and Longwood. They will notify the fire department, police department, and Bedford County Fire and Rescue of the street closings. Residents of the affected streets will also be notified and will have ingress and egress to their homes. Race start time will remain the same as years past, 8:30 AM, with approximately 600 runners participating. And again, a letter will be sent to the residents of that area. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the closing of streets for the Christmas Classic Foot Race from 7:30 AM to 11:00 AM on December 6th, 2025.
All right, do I wanna hear a motion for that?
Motion.
All right, Councilman Evans and Councilman Haley, any discussion? Pretty well self-explanatory. Okay, Sean?
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
And Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting aye.
All right, now reappraisal of funds for outstanding fiscal year 25 purchase orders.
At the end of fiscal year 2025, certain purchase order projects were not fully completed, which resulted in an outstanding carryover balance. As a part of the fiscal year-end procedures, departments were asked to review all purchase, all open purchase orders for accuracy. These requests were reviewed and the balance will be included in the fiscal year 25 audited financial report. These commitments are recognized as assigned funds in the audited financial statements, and this rollover does not impact the year-end unassigned fund balance. Total amount of requests is $876,308.43. In order to account for these purchase orders in the new fiscal year, a budget rollover of these encumbered funds is requested. Tonight, town council is requested to approve the budget amendment before you, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts listing.
All right, you have heard the action and read it. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Haley and who?
Second.
And Councilman Foster. What questions or discussion do you have?
I think the only question I would have to ask on the language show, capital for the electric fund and just electrical fund, the electrical fund is just the capital for the electrical fund, what's the difference between the two funds?
Yes, so if you're looking at the PDF, the logos on the top, this is probably the best report from our system. And at the very end of that report, you'll see the breakout by each individual fund. So we have $155,000 rollover in the general fund, solid waste fund of $66,000, electric fund of $33,000, capital projects funds of $25,000, and the electric capital project fund of $595. Now, if you actually go through the details, I think you can see 118. Starts on page.
What page would that be on?
Seven. And so most of this is to WSP, so this is for engineering services with electric fund. This is the first year we've included the PDF report. I personally like it a little bit better because it gives you more information on who the vendor is, that rolling over the amount, and also the general letter codes associated with it.
And the $16,685, is that the word, the thing to be replaced up here on Main Street, that light pole up here?
I don't believe so, but I'll confirm talking from the John.
Okay, thank you. And I did have one question, the third page from the front, about the third of the way down, it says trousers and shirts for office. Who does that?
Officers.
Okay, officers, okay. I saw that, I thought, now who in the office is requiring?
Oh, the officers.
Okay, thank you. And that's just that one, I'm sorry. All right, anything else?
I mean, just for clarity, these are like 24 encumbered funds being rolled over in 25, right?
Well, 20, so fiscal year 25 actually ended June 30th, so we're in 26, so it's rolling over those to revenue for fiscal year.
All right.
You're welcome.
Sean?
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting aye.
All right, resolution, 2025 reimbursement resolution for municipal building?
The Town of Bedford Municipal Building has lately been experiencing multiple system failures in its heating, cooling, and electrical systems. Although the town has replaced significant components of these systems, the original system designed in 1966 is mostly still in use. The town has investigated the ability to continue to repair the existing components, but the system has deteriorated to the point the staff recommends a complete replacement of the existing system. As the town continues to investigate the full cost of the needed renovations and repairs, staff recommends adopting a reimbursement resolution. Section 1.150-2 of the U.S. Treasury Regulations permits an issuer to reimburse itself for all preliminary costs of a project, which includes engineering or other soft costs. However, the town may only reimburse itself for hard costs of construction if it has adopted a resolution. This resolution does not commit the town to issue debt or to reimburse itself from an issuance, but does allow the town to claim costs incurred prior to closing towards a future debt issuance. Tonight, town council is requested to adopt the resolution as recommended by staff.
Okay. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, Vice Mayor Updike and Councilman Haley. All right, discussion, questions? We're not really going into depth, this is just.
Not yet.
The first stage.
Trying to avoid it, but mainly what we're trying to do is get the appropriate engineering advice to get ahead of these things, to make sure that we review costs expeditiously.
Well, I think Vice Mayor Updike said this earlier, it's, an old building needs a repair, and whatever additional things that need to be done, we might as well do them. So it's good for another, who knows, 20, 25 years or so.
And for anyone that hadn't kept up with this, just to give you a little background information on it, over the summer, we started experiencing some significant air conditioning issues, which is an inconvenience certainly for the staff, but we also just finished upgrading our servers, and those things were starting to overheat, so we didn't need to lose the money that we invested on new servers. We had floor air conditioners running around, set up everywhere. We had fans, trying to circulate that cold air as best we could, and then what that caused was a revelation that our electric service, this building just wasn't able to handle that type of load. And so just one problem just revealed another problem. And so these are steps to try to correct those in the most expeditious and physically conservative manner.
Anything else?
This is to fix the whole building?
Yes, it's, again, we wanna make sure we identify all the costs, because as Vice Mayor Updike mentioned, we tried a temporary solution with temporary air conditioning units, which blew the circuits that were original to the 1960s. So we're also looking at windows, we're looking at the possibility of space needs in the police department, maybe make, expanding downstairs again. We wanna get a comprehensive list of everything we think might be wrong to get to you to decide what you actually wanna do.
Can we just replace a roof? I think we done some heating.
Yeah, but we did have the roof resealed, and that work was done with a 15-year warranty. Thank you for bringing that up. The other thing is, we've explored temporary solutions to the air conditioning problem. They do not come with warranties past one to three years and would likely have to be replaced, meaning we'd probably spend that money twice.
I missed the first part about the air conditions. Say that again?
The temporary solutions that we were looking for, basically adding a temporary cooling system in our parking lot, but that was only warranted for one to three years.
Okay.
Then it would probably have to be torn out later.
Yeah, then we gotta stop that. Anything else? All right, Sean?
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with all members voting aye.
All right. Next is closed session. Do I read that?
Yes.
Maybe we go to the closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2-2, dot, or 3711A3 and 8, for the purpose of discussion or consideration, acquisition or disposition of land, and for consultation with the town attorney regarding the legal status of such property. Where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town regarding forest property outside of town limits to the Peaks Magisterial District of Bedford County. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Haley, second?
Second.
Councilman Foster made the second.
We got a five-minute break between.
Actually, seven. We're all first.
This is where the hundred...